Good morning. I'd like to, just a second. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all here in person, and I know we've got people tuning in. Welcome. At this time, I'd like to welcome Paul Bastic, our Denton County Veteran Service Officer. He is going to lead us in our invocation, and then our pledges will be led by Eric Gildersley, our, you know, project coordinator in county administration. And I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones, and if you'll, please stand.
Good morning, everybody. Please pray with me.
Dear heavenly Father, this past Sunday...
We celebrate it? According to folklore, folklore, folks wear a shamrock on Saint Patrick's Day because the saint used its three leaves to explain the Trinity: the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. What better way to head into Palm Sunday this week? The Sunday before Easter and the sixth and the last Sunday of Lent, which began on Ash Wednesday. The beginning of this week, and before his death, the resurrection, and it was greeted by people who strewed cloaks and tree branches along his path to honor him as their king. May we honor Christ as our king. Dear God, may we always remember the sacrifice made by your son for our forgiveness of sin and the chance of life everlasting. You loved us so dearly, you gave us your son, and he died for us on that cross. May we always remember and honor Christ as our king. And may your Holy Spirit live within each and every one of us. The Holy Spirit involves recognizing his personhood, experience and conviction, receiving new life, and allowing his indwelling presence to guide us toward the holiness and a deeper relationship with God. We pray that God will bless us with abundance in all areas of life, including health, relationship, and finances, and that you will see the manifestation of his promises in our life. We pray over this court and its elected leaders. May today's session and every session thereafter be in your will and to the benefit of our county. Bless our judge and the commissioners. Be with our first responders, our active duty military, and the veterans of this great nation. Holy Father, provide us with your wisdom and discernment to make righteous choices, to avoid the pitfalls that lie in our paths. May your guiding light be with us in every decision, leading us closer to you and to the destiny you have ordained for us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we got it. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Eric. First, I'd like to go to item one, which is public input for items not listed on the agenda, and we have our first public comment form is from Ms. Chelsea Stallings.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
County Judge. My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, seven six two oh one. I see Commissioner Edmondson, you've got the sun in your eyes this morning. That looks pretty bad right there. But I just wanted to give an update. We did decide to push back our cemetery cleanup that I mentioned last week. It did get rained out, so we look like we are on track for beautiful weather. I think a high of seventy-four this Saturday, so I am again inviting, excuse me, the Denton County government and everyone in this audience, the greater Denton County community, to our St. John Cemetery cleanup this Saturday. It's going to be from eleven to one. And again, I will just also ask that, we are here asking that we can have full access to the cemetery as an agenda item, so I am going to ask for that again. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next is Mr. Willie Hutzspeth.
Good morning, sir.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Willie Hutzspeth. I live at six twenty-three Newton. The, I noticed this, the officer over here is standing at the ready, and I remember when I was in the military, that I had to, I was in positions that caused me to stand at the ready in Vietnam, and I want to continue that. I thought that that would make a difference. That's why I brought it up to you, to listen at what I have to say and, and give some leverage to what I had to say, but I found that that wasn't, that's not the case. But I want to bring up a point or two about that service that reminds me of what I, what I'm going through now with the St. John Cemetery, which is they have no voice, but I'm trying to give them a voice. And then, then too, some things happened in Vietnam that I didn't understand also I want to talk about. First place, I didn't know why I was over there fighting. They never done anything to me, I thought. They had never called me the names that the people here in this country called me, and they have not treated me the way the people in this country have treated me. So I wondered, why am I over there fighting? Still don't know. To this day, I don't know why I went over there and did what I had to do, but I had to serve. I had to stand at the ready and be willing to do what I was told to do for the country that I had lived in. So some of the things that we did wasn't very honorable over there. There was a place that the soldiers went to, to take advantage of the young girls that were there who did things they did to get food. They needed to eat, so they did what they did to be, get food. And they were young girls. They were twelve, thirteen, and maybe younger. And I would go down there, but I wouldn't, I didn't participate in the things that some of the guys did because of the two reasons. God was, he told me that that's not what you do. And the other one was, my wife said that she would cut it off if she found out that I'd done something like that. So those are the two reasons I, I didn't do it. But the news reporters reported what we were doing. I say "we" because I was part of the military, but what was happening over there. And that's the song that had the bell.
Well, Mr. Hutzspeth, I think we'll have to pick this story up next week. Thank you.
Sir.
Sir, okay, let's, all right. Let's go to item thirteen A. We do have Judge Shakelin here with us today. Thirteen A is approval of a request to submit a grant application to the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. This is SAMSA for the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars for over five years of funding from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four and fis, through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-nine. And Judge, thank you for being here this morning. Do you want to speak on this item?
There's, everything is in the packet. I just didn't know if you all had any questions. As our county continues to grow, so does our drug court. You guys have always been in favor of a drug court, and I, so much, along with our drug court staff and team and the participants certainly appreciate your all involvement and your support of the program. I think Commissioner Faulkner, you've got a firsthand view of the drug court just last week or the week before last. Is that correct?
That's right. No, it was great. Thank you so much for that opportunity to see what you guys, it's a great job you guys are doing.
Yeah, we were happy to have you and always happy for the proclamations that you all give at graduation, and Commissioner Mitchell always reads those proclamations for them, and they certainly appreciate that. So we're just requesting to be able to apply to SAMSA for the grant, to be able to receive it over the timeframe that Judge Eich dispossified.
Perfect. Members, are there any other questions or comments? Chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
He's got a trial that starts here in just a little bit, so we're going to get him in and out. All right. Let's go back and start on item number two. Our consent agenda members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda to have a motion to approve it as presented?
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Faulkner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A's approval of order making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of interdepartmental transfers. Item two C's approval of budgetman request one zero zero nine eight zero for the death, for the death investigation's medical examiner to transfer four thousand, one hundred dollars from fuel to mileage reimbursement, provide additional funds for the remainder of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, and any appropriate action. Item two D's approval of budgetman request one zero one zero three zero for the county administration department to transfer six thousand, eight hundred dollars from professional services to administrative equipment, to purchase various office equipment, office furniture and equipment for the department's new offices after relocating and appropriate action. Item two E's approval of the road superintendent report for the month of February two thousand and twenty-four. Item four A is a public hearing on March the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for the approval of the replat of the Nelson addition. This is a replat of lot one, block eight. It's a six point four one acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? Motion of, open a public hearing by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Are there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat of the Nelson addition? Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the replat of the Nelson addition? All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by, to close the public hearing by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval? We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item five A, approval of the bill report payments from CSCD Community Corrections. TAIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, and VIT Interest and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of award of ITB two three dash two seven nine for mowing lots and fields to Orozco Lawn and Property Management LLC. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of rejection of all bids for ITB two three two seven eight to historical building relocation. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Teigenall and Perkins as the most qualified firm for the Denton County Court's building expansion and remodel project under RFPQ two three two seven four four. This is survey services. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next is item six D, approval of renewal of ITB two three two seven five three printer supplies and election supply carriers ESC, ESCs to Bob Brooks Computer Sales and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction two four two eight zero zero held in February, March, two thousand and twenty-four and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six F, approval to declare miscellaneous computer equipment, office supplies, furniture, appliance, and tools as surplus advertising place in online auction two four two eight zero three. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A, approval of budget amendment request one zero zero nine seven zero for the district clerk to transfer four thousand, five hundred dollars from postage, four thousand, five hundred dollars from administrative supplies, and four thousand, five hundred from training and education to jury and grand jury, postage for a total of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars to allocate funding for the cost of postage for necessary mailings for the remainder of the fiscal year. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven B, approval of budgetman request one zero zero nine nine zero to roll over twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars into unspent funds and increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the registration state training funds received for Constable one, two, three, four, five, six, and the criminal district attorney at sixteen thousand, eighty-one dollars for a total transfer of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven C, approval of budgetman request one zero one zero 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 to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the two thousand and twenty-four hotel occupancy tax grant for supplies and for archives preservation, contract labor, museum tours, and promotion historical exhibits, and this, and the stony store restoration for a total of two hundred and ninety thousand. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven D, approval of budgetman request one zero one zero one zero for the Department of Transportation and Engineering to transfer fifteen thousand from Culverts, Culverts to technology software services for the annual subscription of Elements XS program and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven E, approval of budgetman request one zero one zero two zero to transfer two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars from nondepartmental unappropriate contingency to various line items and application development and support for the three newly created ERP administration positions to be reimbursed from ARPA. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven F, approval of budgetman request one zero one zero four zero to roll over unspent funds from the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four for the Hot Funds Tourism Grant two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three in amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have two new hires in adult probation, one demotion in the district attorney's office, one new hire in juvenile probation, four new hires in the sheriff's office, all detention officer ones, one rehire in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the sheriff's office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Next is item eight B. This is approval of a downgrade of slot zero zero two C, C A to Commissioners Court Pay grade sixteen to pay grade fifteen. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Judge, you have a question. So I think it's appropriate that we probably need to reevaluate this pay grade. So I agree with that. I almost wonder, especially with our comp study coming. Because we're not, we've already said with that comp study, we're not going to decrease things, and I'm, I'm just wondering when I, and I'm not an expert, but I've looked through that analysis. I'm wondering what, you know, maybe, should it, should it be a fourteen? I don't, I don't know exactly. But I'm happy to feel whatever the thought is.
I think it should be a fifteen on the same level.
Is your microphone on?
Okay. As our chief administrators.
Okay.
That position reports to us as a department head, so director, so it should be the same level as our chief administrators. And it was a fourteen at one time, and we looked at the duties and all that was going on with that, and we raised it to a fifteen.
Okay.
I think about three years ago, maybe, maybe four, maybe four years ago. Stubble, you know when we raised that? Sorry to put you on the spot. And that, that position does supervise the person also and does bail bond.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking. Give me one second.
I think we, I know we were over in the old courthouse when we, when we did it.
Do you want to hold this? Do you want to hold this or to next week or proceed?
Well, the only problem is that we really do need to post it, right? Okay.
Are you okay with it?
I'm, I'm okay. Yeah, no, you've explained what.
Fifteen, yes. Do you, are you okay with it? Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B, an option of a resolution and approval of a tax abatement agreement between Denton County, Texas, Carhart Incorporated and XL Incorporated is authorized by the Property Redevelopment and Tax Abatement Act and the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter Three, I mean Title Three, Chapter Three, twelve, Subchapter B, and the Denton County Tax Abatement Policy is recommended by the Denton County Economic Development Department and Denton County Commissioner Precinct Four and any appropriate action. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen A, approval of addendum number two to the master agreement for architectural services between owner Denton County, Texas, and architect Branstad or Carroll Incorporated, formerly Kirkpatrick Architecture Studio for the Stony Store Project RFQ two zero two five eight three miscellaneous facility projects in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed two thousand, with funding to come from the Hot Funds Tourism Grant even years. This is order line item one three seven five five seven one zero six zero as requested by the, and recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item seventeen. Our community updates will start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. I've got one thing. It's pretty, pretty interesting. On March eleventh, nineteen twenty-four, the voters of Aubrey voted to become incorporated. The vote was seventy-four, four, sixty-eight against, which that's a pretty slim margin. Not too many voters in the first place. The city of Aubrey was incorporated on March eleventh, nineteen twenty-four, so congratulations on a hundred years.
Perfect, congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Yeah, you bet. Kevin, are you, are you ready?
Yes, thank you, Judge. So a few things coming up across the precinct. So Carrollton's Health and Safety Fair is the twenty-third at Standridge Stadium, ten a.m. That's always fun. And the Bio Blitz hike in Mass, Texas Master Naturalist is also on the twenty-third at noon at Elm Fort Nature Center, and I, I want to point out that the, their annual citizens' evening where the stay the city is going to be on the twenty-seventh at six p.m. at the senior center. In Corinth, there's a Easter egg hunt, extreme Easter egg, Easter egg hunt on the twenty-third at two p.m. And we've got some other Easter things coming up that I'll mention in the future. Let's see, the Frisco Festival of Colors is going to be at the Independence Parkway Practice Fields on the twenty-third at two p.m. And Little Elm has their Farmer's Market on the lawn on the 23rd at, on the lawn. And Shady Shores in the colony, or actually, it's the colony, continues to have their income tax preparation at the library as we are approaching, we are definitely in tax season now. And then they have their spring extravaganza at the Five Star Complex on the 28th at 5:00 p.m. That's all I've got.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
I have the Flower Mount Farmer's Market every Sunday still at Parker Square. The Six Factors of Successful Gardening, I think I'll give this to Fred, March 20th at 7:00 p.m. at the Flower Mount Public Library. 40th Annual Easter Eggs Scramble on March 23rd on Saturday, 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Jake's Hilltop Park, and this is in Flower Mount. H2O Egg Hunt, March 24th, 1:30 p.m. 1200 Yarol Road Community Activity Center, and it's in Flower Mount, and you do have to register. Two Fascinating First Ladies of the 19th Century on March 25th at 7:00 p.m. 3030 Broadmoor Lane, Flower Mount Public Library. A retired U.S. history teacher will discuss the lives, contributions, and lives of Dolly Madison and Julia Taylor. Waterwise Yards, how to save money and to save water and money every day, and that's going to be March 27 at the Flower Mount Library. Holland Village on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Easter Egg Hunt at Broad Hill Park, Unity, Broad Hill Boulevard, Unity Park. It's a free event. Face painting, pictures, come out and enjoy it. And excellent, excellent, excellent day. Easter event, March 30th at the Shops of Holland Village. Castle Hill Village Shops every Saturday. VITAL Income Tax Preparation is still going on at the Louisville Library, and AARP Tax Aid is going on also at the Louisville Library. And Neighborhood Grant Workshop is today at 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. in Louisville at the library. And reminder of the 11 to 1 St. John's Cemetery, that she just told us about.
Perfect. Commissioner Edmondson?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Falconer, I saw something on the news last night that I think is in your precinct. Tiger Woods is opening up a sports center in the colony, and it's like a glorified miniature golf, cornhole, and several paddle ball, several other things. Sounds very exciting. I want you to try that out for us and let us know how that works.
Yeah. You haven't seen me golf, have you?
Cornhole.
Oh, cornhole. I can, I can probably do some of that, but.
I think the judge can teach you on that.
That's probably true. No, Grandscape is continuing to expand. There's so much great stuff happening.
That wonderful.
Yeah, it just sounded really cool. So I want to congratulate you on that. Here in Denton, we're going to be having a night hike on the 22nd in the Clear Crew Natural Heritage Center, and then we're going to have the Great American Cleanup on the 23rd from 8:00 in the morning till 1:00 p.m. And we bring the civic center, get gloves, trash bags, and other community members there who will be going around and picking up litter and cleaning up the public spaces. And as you all probably know, this is Women's History Month, so on the 23rd at the Martin Luther King Rec Center in Denton, they're going to congregate and celebrate women's history at a special celebration. Like all the other areas, we also have Easter Extravaganza. That's going to be on the 30th in Quakertown Park. That'll be a family-friendly, friendly event. And then in Flower Mount, Commissioner Mitchell has already covered all of those. They've got a lot going on there. However, moving a little further up, the Haslett, there's an Easter egg hunt there on the 23rd at the community center. And then New Fairview is also having an Easter egg hunt. The Easter Bunny is going to have to go all over Denton County, putting all these eggs out because everybody's got an Easter egg hunt.
Yep.
And Roanoke, it's an Egapalooza. Is that how you say that, Commissioner Mitchell? You had those too, I think.
It's selling.
Anyway, then our last one would be at Trophy Club, the Extravaganza on March 30th. And they said you can not only gather eggs, but you can visit with the Easter Bunny there. So I think that's what's going on, Judge.
Perfect. Good. I want to give a big Denton County shout out to our Flower Mount High School, their speech and debate team for winning the state championship last week. So that is a way to go Jags. So, all right, hearing no other items before the court today. We are adjourned. Thank you.